It's 5:30. Our meeting will resume for our budget of 2024. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had recess at our last meeting to come back and talk about soil and water. And, um, let me have that piece of paper. I spoke with Vince Pitstick and he said that they have filled David Caldwell's position with Brian Sasser, and he is actually the chairman of the board now, and he has assumed all the responsibilities that David Caldwell had. So we don't have to do anything with that position.
He'll do a good job.
They have taken care of it. I'm going to give this information to Jane so she can have it for further reference. And then we were, there was one more discussion. What, you guys, what else were we discussing?
I thought soil and water was something.
Soil and water mainly?
I thought we were discussing.
Okay.
What about Ron? Did you talk Ron?
I have not, no, have not been able to. He's outside. But no, I have not. So, and we have, I have some meetings scheduled with, about Channel 3 and stuff with the city, but we can't go forward with any of that. So, is that it?
I think we're gonna lose Ron because Wayne County has an opening up there. If we didn't, if we can't bring it up to comparison, we might lose him.
What's that comparison?
I think it was 26 something an hour for part-time.
And what is Ron making?
Seventeen something.
Nineteen with the $2 raise.
Have we already went?
Set the budget on that?
Uh, with the...
Well, Ron was, is still considered part-time.
Yes.
And with, with the $2 increase we talked about for part-time workers, that would put him at 19 an hour, which is more than any other part-time in Fayette County. But...
Can we give him a stipend for being a department head?
That would be a Jane question. I don't know. Can he get a stipend?
I don't know. Very much department head supervises people, and he doesn't supervise anybody, so in a way, what's he...
He's department head.
He's not an elected official.
I don't know how that works with the stipends and with him not having anyone. I don't know.
I just hate to see him losing.
Yeah, he's definitely an asset for veterans, but I don't know what we can do because we've discussed job, changing of the job description, and he's part-time. So what is the 26,000 in, what'd you, how much did you say? Is $26 an hour?
Twenty-six something at Wayne County.
Okay, so is that part-time or is that full-time?
Part-time.
Okay. All right.
That's where you go.
No, he makes $19 an hour.
And that would mean our veterans would have to drive up there.
Okay, are there further comments on this?
Be ashamed of losing.
Scott, do you have any comments?
Well, I mean, Ron's, Ron's really good with his job.
Yes, he is.
And, and I appreciate him tremendously. I, I think if we start trying to match Wayne County, we're gonna be fighting a losing battle when it comes to pay.
But Ron's positions, Ron's positions are very unique jobs.
Well, yeah, but I think it's a little unique no matter where he would go. I'd hate to lose him, but...
I don't think I'm going to.
Well, I don't, I don't, I would much rather see what is, um, yeah, I think if we try to keep up with Wayne County when it comes to pay, it's gonna be a battle we're eventually gonna lose.
Like I said, I'm not talking about everybody. I'm talking about his veterans.
And I understand that, but you're setting a precedent with this.
We don't have that many military officers sitting around.
Well, it's up to the council.
I'm just saying, that's all I gotta say.
Yeah.
Jim?
What?
What do you think?
You know, I ain't losing, but if we do it for one, you know, everybody's job is unique, Jane's unique, everybody else is unique. We, I don't know.
And he's working outside his job description and everything that he does too.
Right. He needs a job description first or updated. You know, Ron does a good job. He cares about the people.
Absolutely.
Yes, he does. I would never doubt that at all. Yeah.
I'm down to 29.5 now.
Well, that, you know, we're talking about it per hour. That's just how it's overall.
Mike, do you have a comment?
It's a good job. It's a great job.
Yeah.
It's a good job.
What would that do, what would the dollars amount on that be per year if we did that part-time? I'm just asking numbers is all I'm asking.
Um, I'm sorry, if you took it to...
To the, from 19 to 26.
Is he worth 30 hours a week?
Yeah.
It's a 1,500, hopefully by seven, you're talking 10.5.
How many hours of work you work now, Ron?
Who, me?
Yeah.
28 on paper.
How many?
I do, 28's what I'm offered, is right, I mean, up to 28 a week, right?
Seven.
So 28.
I don't remember if they changed that. It was 24.
And how much are they...
It, it, we did change it. It's 28.
We moved it up.
I couldn't remember.
How much is that? At Richmond, how many hours, what's the rate of that job description?
Richmond's VSO?
It's gonna be a $10,000 one day.
I talked to them today. They're set up different. They're set up to where the VSO is paid by the county. They have an assistant.
$10,000 one day.
VSO. Because they have over 5,000 veterans in that county. So the second VSO or assistant VSO gets paid by the city. $29 an hour, or 29 hours a week, $25 an hour. Rush County is paid, but he's paid different because he's under contract, right, Jeff?
I don't, I don't even, I don't think that is.
It's Dan and Todd.
How many veterans?
The VSO in Rushville.
How many veterans do you serve in Fayette County?
Over 1,600. That's just in Fayette County. That doesn't include all the veterans that come from the surrounding counties that come So roughly 1,700 to 1,800.
Well, why do we have people come from other counties? Don't they have veterans officers there or...
They do. Every county is required, in the, in the country, every county is required to have a veteran service officer. Sometimes it's, like the one in Ru, in Richmond, the main VSO, he retired. So their assistant moved to the main VSO job so that the assistant VSO was vacant. Other counties have multiples depending, some of them, one of them has 1,500 veterans, they have four veteran service officers, four. One main, three assistants, and they have less than what I do. Some of them are open by appointment only, some of them are open like I am, where the door is open during office hours, and if we gotta go somewhere, we just gotta go and we just leave the sign on the door in our phone. But that's that piece of it. The other piece of that is, is the more that we're open, the more veterans that come in, the more veterans that apply for compensation, that's more money back to the county, to the city. Because where are they spending their money? They're spending it here. That's more revenue, more input from the government back this direction, right? So that's where that falls into. Right now, I'm open by doing it 28 hours, going up to the 28-hour limit, then I am open four days a week, seven hours a day, seven hours during those days. And then, so that's 9:30 in the morning until 4:30 in the afternoon. No lunches. My office doesn't close for lunch. Because people who work only can come at lunchtime sometimes, or they can only come after hours, or they can only come on the weekends because they work Monday through Friday, and my hours aren't conducive to theirs. Like I was in here yesterday because the girl worked, didn't, can't take time off. She's maxed out because of her dad is sick. She's maxed out all of her PTO time. I came in on Monday in order to take care of her and her dad. After-hours calls, you name it. So could I work 40 hours a week? Absolutely. Could I work 33, 35? Absolutely. It's all something that not, and I know you guys are doing with something else, but to see what can be done, but that was something I'm gonna commissioners first, then talk to, through the proper channels from my standpoint. But do I work that? Yes.
And you have to be a veteran to be in your position.
Here's, here's the state statute. The state statute is you must be a veteran and you must serve, have served for at least six months. Where the six months comes in is for those people that were National Guardsmen, they have to serve active duty for six months. Most National Guardsmen do not spend six months active duty in a row, right? Without being activated or other special circumstances. The other part to that is, and it's written in the job description too, but it's not complete, is that a dependent or a family member of a veteran can be the VSO. But what's not written in there is they must have served as an assistant veteran service officer for two years prior to applying for, to become the VSO. Here's my thing. I have served 27 years, well, 35 actually. 27 on the active side and compounding in that portion, doing the same job I'm doing right now. What I know in 27 years, somebody in six months would never know. But that's the minimum for the state. To, to be a veteran service officer, you must be a veteran, you must have served at least six months honorably, and then, and/or a family member who's been a VSO for two, or an assistant for two years that could then apply. So like Norma Buckley, right? I don't know if anybody remembers Norma, but Norma worked in the office for a lot of years actually, but when she applied to become the VSO, she couldn't become the VSO because she wasn't a family member of a veteran. That's where that falls into. So, but yeah, I mean, if I could be open five days for seven hours, that's something. But then it changes everything because there's benefits involved. I don't need them, I already have them because I'm retired. So, but that doesn't change it for the next person who comes in who may want them. So they still have to be offered, so that's another piece to it. But do we need to be act, do we need to be full-time? The last four VSOs from this county will all have to be for, full-time. For whatever reason, I don't know, I wasn't here, so I don't know why. But I can tell you that's why they left. Because they needed full-time employment. I just make duty. I know that's not probably what some people want to hear, but I make duty. I will not quit them. Do you want me to quit on one of your family members? No. I don't want to quit on any of you either. I don't. And I wouldn't, whether it's in my job for you or not, I'm still kind of, still hoping.
You were just discussing your hourly rate.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, I, sorry, I didn't know.
Yeah. And we did, we've already approved $2 an hour. I don't know if you know that or not, but we've approved that.
Heard it anyways, but I didn't know.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to, we haven't finalized the budget yet.
Okay.
So we are, and we do appreciate everything that you do. You're, you're definitely, you'll never make as much as you're worth. None of us do.
I'm not worried about that. I'm not after the money.
But I'm just, I'm just saying, we are, we, we do see the value that you are in our community, and we appreciate you very much.
I appreciate it.
Ron, were you thinking about going to Richmond at any time?
Okay. Don't know. Just found out. I didn't know Ron retired. But, I mean, if I was in it for the money, it would have to be at least $25 an hour because now I have to pay gas and I have to pay my time. They'll make accommodation. You guys have been great as far as accommodating. I mean, obviously with Smalls and me having the service doc, it's never been an issue or a problem, even since day one, that was never, that was never even a secondary thought by the commissioners. And they've all met him, they all know him, everybody in the courthouse loves him, so I mean, Smalls is very well-trained and stays under his desk in his spot. But if it was about the money, it'd be the same as the sheriff's department guys leaving for more money. It'd be the same for the dispatchers leaving for more. I have a veteran who told me the story. His daughter was working here as a dispatcher making 13 bucks an hour part-time. She left and went to Union County to be full-time at $50 an hour. She has now left the state. She's in Tennessee making 29 an hour. I'm not some 18-year-old kid chasing money. I'm not. That's not who I am. I'm 54-years-old and I'm retired from the Navy. So my son, he's on his own, my ex is on her own, but I maintain three households, three. So I work because I want and am passionate about this job. This is my life's work, everybody. Think about what you've all done for your entire lifetime and take that away from somebody.
We get to...
It takes, it takes a lot, it takes a toll on you if, once you stop doing it, but, no, I'm, could I, sure, job's gotta be open, you know? But they hit me up. They told me about it and they're like, how, because we all, trust me, we all talking, it's like, hey, how do you do this? How do you do that kind of thing? And we all help each other. Union County is closed-door, appointment only. Franklin County, she just started. I know she's part-time. Shelbyville is part-time. He's trying to get full-time, but he has 2,200 veterans. But he also works in the courthouse, separate from being the VSO now, because he gets 20 hours. And then his other eight remaining hours that he can get is through, I think, the auditor's office or something. So, but he still gets his 28, he just splits it different and they allow him to do whatever he needs to do. So Hendricks County, $65,000 a year for Hendricks County, for their VSO. He has four assistants. So there's, the counties are all different. I mean, is it an option to go to the city maybe? Maybe, but I need to talk to the commissioners about that. I don't know. I don't know how much they would be willing to work for it at all. I don't know. But it's an option that could think, you know? But $2 an hour, if that's what it is, then I think...
That's what we're looking at in our budget and, and we're working on other things too for your office and stuff. So it's not, we're, we're trying to do everything.
I appreciate whatever you guys do.
Well, and we appreciate you. We never want you to think that we minimize what you do at all.
No, you guys have never done that. If not, the room would be full of veterans.
Okay, well, I...
Not at my call, theirs.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you for sure, so...
Yep. Did I answer your questions?
Yes. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. More discussion.
I wanted to talk about Lisa's situation, that email she sent.
Okay. I think we already voted on that the other night.
What's that?
We did, but then she sent an email afterwards.
Okay, yeah.
We'll just talk to her today. So I think that's supersede your email, right?
I think, I think that, I think you should go talk to her. I think that issue's gonna be remedied.
I've heard a lot of different things, so I don't know who to believe.
Well, I mean, you guys can talk about it. She didn't guarantee me it, but I think, I mean, I think she's leaning towards signing it, but I don't want to put words in her mouth, but yeah, I think that's the case. But I think that, but I think just important for this board and the commissioners to understand that if they ever get, hey, you've gotta have this stuff archived appropriately, and there's not money in there, that's gonna have to be made up somehow.
Right. It's gonna either come out now or later because...
But I think that's kind of the understanding is if we get to that point that it has to be there, then she, I mean, I kind of told her that, hey, they won't really have a choice, they'll have to fund it, so, I mean...
She said at the rate with, if she doesn't hire it out, what she said would be done in a year, about $250,000 roughly. And if she does it with the two part-time people at this rate, it'd be like 10 years from now before it'd be done. That's what I heard.
But she feels comfortable that she has a solution?
I don't think she wants this solution. I think she would rather not sign. But I think your guys' vote, I think she...
I voted no.
Well, I understand that. I'm not saying individually, I'm second. I, I don't know. I'm not gonna like, I didn't, I don't feel comfortable like speaking for her at this point. I mean, I, I do think that it was my impression that reluctantly she was going to sign off on it, as long as, as you guys had the understanding that, hey, we are going to, I mean, if, if it comes down, if it comes down that we have to have this done quicker than what we can do with finances, then we may have to chip in the money to do it. Which I, sounds like without being here, that was your guys' opinion anyway. It's like that, you don't believe that would happen, but if that does happen, you would understand you would have to spend money that's not there anymore. But no, I don't want to get the impression that she's like wanting to sign it and that's her choice. No, I think she understands where everything's at and understands at this point in time that's the move that needs to be done to make it all work.
I think we've gone over some of this stuff with her, I mean, in the past, but...
Now, she could, she could wake up tomorrow and tell you something different. I'm not, I'm not telling you what this is.
I understand what you're saying.
But, but my impression of, you know, midday today was that her, that she was likely going to sign it. Not that it was what she wanted to do, but she was likely going to sign it. She has concerns about how she's gonna get that archived the way it needs to be or updated the way it needs to be. But, I mean, I, I would tell you, advise you guys, and I think you all know this, that if we're told we have to have it ready, or if we feel compelled that it's time to have this the way it needs to be, and the money's not there, we, we will have to find it somewhere from county general or something else. So, it might have to be paid for one way or the other. I think it was just your guys' impression that that's something we might be able to do in the future, and we might be able to do it with the money's coming in.
Just so it gets done.
Just so it gets done. And I know you have commissioner's support for it to get done, so I don't think us not getting it done, I haven't heard anyone tell me that that's their choice.
Did she come for the commissioners today for this?
No. She asked me to come talk to her and I did.
Okay.
And she kind of wanted my opinion on where everything stood and legally, you know, what the issues were, and, and I think she controls that, whether she signs off on it or not. But obviously the council controls other things, and I think it does nobody any favors to dispute it. Now, I want it very clear, she does have concerns, some concerns that it could be an issue in the future, but you guys have already talked about that, I think, and said, you know, if, if that becomes something a year or two years down the road and we have to pay it out of county general, we have to fund it more, we will.
We'll fund it someplace.
Right. But I, I don't anticipate her not signing, but I'm not giving you that concrete answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. But I would encourage you guys to get this done quicker than wait. Let's not wait till December.
Right.
Okay, let's get that signed off. Let's get, let's just get it behind us and figure out what we do.
Okay. So do we need to contact her, Jane, or about that, her signing that paper? What do we need to do? Because last year, I remember, that was almost too late.
Yes.
So we need to get that done sooner than later.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So do you contact her? Do you, do I? How do we proceed with this?
I think you as council president probably best, you best with it.
Okay. More comments?
Yes, I'll go back to the veteran service officer.
To the what? I'm sorry.
Veteran service officer.
Uh-huh.
Jane, what would it do, sort of closer to $20 an hour with that $2 raise, then we are 19, correct?
Uh, it's 19-something, yeah. I don't know the exact amount without...
If we went to five, we have done for certain positions in the courthouse, we're like officials. The obstacle is a one-on-one case, and there is only one position, at that part-time position, there's only one category, classification for that office. What if we went to 23, whatever?
Whatever you guys want to do.
Well, rough estimates, about $13 to $1500 a year per dollar, at 28 hours a year, 28 hours.
You'd have to be more comfortable with that than if we, if we might entertain that.
We have two minutes, so we probably need to recess until after our monthly meeting. Recession till, with those thoughts, and resume after our... Okay. All right. It's time to resume our budget meeting. It is 6:31, and we will now resume our discussion. Mr. Winter had made a, we were in discussion on a salary. Okay, Mike, we had to catch you off, so...
I just had mentioned that, what would it look like and what would be if we went to, you know, 13, whatever the change was, on, with like almost $20 an hour with a $2 addition, went to 23, that'd be almost 24. If you have a problem with that, we have addressed other elected officials, not some elected official, I get that.
We did match it.
So did other elected, or other positions, and have addressed them on a one-on-one basis, department, but they were elected officials at that time.
I'm with you for giving him more.
So what was the, the actual dollar amount? I'm sorry, I, I grew.
I guess it would equal to five.
An hour. Exactly, how much an hour?
What it is.
It'd be 22.74. If he's suggesting a $5 an hour increase, it would be, take it from 17.74 to 22.74.
It'd be six then.
I'm sorry.
I guess it would be six then. I guess, I guess it would be $6, not five, so, 23.72 is what I was looking for.
23.72?
Yeah, apologize.
Okay. So then what's the question?
So that 22.74 an hour, Ben?
No.
Well, you just said he was 23.72.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the change was, I don't know. I'm looking for, it was 17-something.
So is that...
I'm sorry, Sharon, I'm with you. I don't know what I'm doing here.
It's 17-something an hour right now, correct?
He says 17.74.
Everybody in here is...
Right now.
Well, with the $2 an hour, you're right.
I'll have to be 23.74.
Yeah.
So you want to take it to 23.74?
Yes.
So that would be a $6 an hour increase.
That's my thought suggestion.
Okay.
My opinion.
Right. Right. And then times twenty-eight hours, and then times fifty-two weeks a year, that would take his pay to thirty-four five, basically.
And what is he right now? Thirty-four five.
Seventeen seventy-four.
Twenty-three eighty-eight.
And twenty-eight, and thirty-two. Right now, he'd be at twenty-five, so it's a ten thousand. It's almost a ten thousand dollar increase.
Okay, what estimate? That's the same thing on Moose's Richmond. Richmond is ten thousand one hundred ninety-two dollar difference.
Do you need to talk to commissioners about this?
I'm good with it.
Do you need to talk to commissioners about it? You know, the council's have to pay, the discussion of what belongs to us. How is it suggested for me?
Right, right.
If anybody has another figure or something else, or opposed to that, then say something.
What would that bring it up to yearly salary?
Another ten thousand dollars. Oh, you mean?
Thirty-four something.
Thirty-four something?
Thirty-four five.
Yeah.
He's always asking for, what was it? Twenty-four thousand?
No, his original request was twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine five. You're getting three or four thousand dollars more than he asked for. He's getting more than sheriff's department. Then you go have all the other employees upset. I mean, they'll think we need to talk to commissioners before we do anything.
We don't have to talk to commissioners.
They might know some rules we don't know about.
No rules. Jane, you have to do that.
I'm sorry?
Did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I just, some, somebody said something about jailers, and I was like, you, you just took your jailers to twenty-sixty-seven. I was waiting for that question.
An hour?
Yeah, twenty-sixty-seven.
And Ron would be making?
More than the jailers.
Well, twenty-three seventy-four.
But he is a department head. I think it's fair. I'll make the motion.
I think it's a lot. I'm just being real. I think ten thousand dollars is, that's, that's a lot of money in one raise, and we've given two dollars an hour, and I can see a little bit, you know, even like to twenty-one maybe, but I mean, ten thousand dollars, you might as well say eleven hundred, it's ten thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars.
And it's more than he asked for.
Yeah. Give him, what would the, what would be the amount for what he asked for per?
Twenty-nine five.
Twenty, twenty dollars and cents an hour.
Twenty-two sixty-six.
There's not another department head that goes above and beyond.
I get that.
Way beyond.
And he's outside his job description when he does it. That's what I'm telling you.
Goes above and way beyond.
Councilman Cranfield, I, I would suggest that, you know, Councilman Patterson has put a motion on the table. I would, I would ask that you, you go ahead and ask him for a second. And put it to a vote.
Second. For the twenty?
For the twenty-three seventy-four.
Twenty-two seventy-four.
Twenty-three seventy-four is what. Is that right? Twenty-three seventy-four?
The, the raise, Mike.
Mike mentioned, all right, twenty-three seventy-four. So Councilman Patterson needs a motion, and Councilman Peyton is second. And then I would suggest a roll call.
To keep in mind, when you're saying there's not another department head, now Dave Rickman only makes thirty-five thousand, and he works a employee a week. He's a department head with an employee that he supervises.
Right, right.
What was the conversation, Governor?
No, it was, Dave Rickman is a department head, and he works forty hours a week.
I'm just, I'm just referring to the comment that no other department head makes that money or works, and I said Dave Rickman makes thirty-five and works a forty-hour week. And he's department head with an employee that he supervises. So that was all, I'm just saying. Information. Okay, so Councilman Patterson moved to increase pay to twenty-three seventy-four?
And Councilwoman Peyton seconded it.
I'm.
So then you would just take a vote?
I would recommend roll call.
Okay.
Roll call.
And then we can make another motion, right? Or another?
Definitely.
Okay.
Winter?
During the discussion, if I have to say, I can't go that high now.
Reiko Peyton?
You just said that.
I just said, I was into discussion. I can't go with what I'm, what I'm agreeing. I think it needs to be increased, but I can't, well, I didn't make the motion.
No, but you said the amount.
I said I made an opinion.
You said the amount, anyway.
He voted.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No. No.
No, hang on.
Maybe the lawyer's too close.
No, Cranfield?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay. But the motion that I would like to make is to give Ron what he asked for. The, what was it?
Twenty-nine five.
Twenty-nine five? Is that what it is?
It's twenty-two sixty-six an hour. Yeah.
Okay, because that's, that's what he asked for to begin with. So that would be my.
How much is that, not to an hour?
Pardon me?
Twenty-two sixty-six.
Okay, one person at a time, please.
Sure.
Jane?
I didn't hear your question.
How much is that, what he asked for an hour?
Twenty-two sixty-six. So are you making that motion yourself?
I, yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Hey, you want a roll call vote, or do you want it?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, hold on a second. Councilman Stewart?
Sorry.
Second your vote, second your motion. Okay. Twenty-five.
And what would that take him to a year?
The twenty-nine five.
Twenty-nine five. Okay.
This is what I had down here in the first place.
Winter?
Yes.
Reiko Peyton?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Bettington?
Yes.
Stewart? Cranfield?
Yes.
Ron, would any credentials or accreditation or something you could tie in with that, something on, considered or thought about stipending that would, would go with that? Have you done, like, from now on, make it stipend for certain certifications, accomplishments, goals, and things that they've met? Do you have that in some other departments?
There's a requirement to the Indiana Department of Veterans Affairs that we all have to be accredited every year. So I go through two, two full days of training, and that accredits every single veteran service officer in the state, along with every assistant veteran service officer in the state. We have to stay accredited in order to work through the American Legion, through the Disabled American Veterans, the DAV, the AMVets, the VFW, in order for us to submit claims and do things on their behalf, or on their behalf. They help us, but we're, we're accredited through them in order to do it that way. Vice, you just submitting your claim on your own. You come through us, we sign you up with them to have them represent you. I'm accredited through the American Legion, also through the VFW, so I can submit claims to the VFW directly, or I can submit claims to the American Legion directly. So there is an accreditation that we have to keep, professional job requirements that we have to meet. I have to keep HIPAA, my HIPAA, I have to do HIPAA training every year because I deal with medical records and medical terminology, or medical conditions that I'm purvey to that other people are not. So you can't just come to the office and say, hey, I want to see so-and-so's record. Can't do that. Just like getting a DD-214, it's protected by the state. It's considered a confidential document, only you, yourself as a veteran, and I can get it. Your family, your wife cannot come get it without coming first through me, then I have to verify she is your spouse, or whatever family member, then I can give it to them only if they have the need to know and to use it. So there are things that go along with this job that have special requirements and needs and accreditation, so yes. I don't know if that answers what your actual question is, but.
So I think this would require further discussion, investigation, discussion with the commissioners, to see if it's something that would be, could be entertained.
I understand.
Oh, I, I would go talk to Jane about that, but. I'm just, I think it's too much in this short a time.
Not at all.
To do, to take, yes, to tonight.
No.
I think it's something maybe to, for future discussion, or if you bring your job description forward, that maybe some things that we aren't aware of, that everybody's not aware of, that you do or have to go above and beyond, kind of thing that the other veteran service officers haven't done, we don't know, I don't know. And I think through discovery, discussion, we could uncover some of those things.
Right.
Would that be fair?
It would. Like, for us, like, I don't, I'm, everybody always wants to say it's the VA, the VA, the VA, I don't work for the VA, I work for the county.
Right.
Because no veteran service officer can work for the VA. It's a conflict of interest. Because if I'm assisting you filling out your claim, and the VA is judging and awarding your claim, and your claim gets denied, who are you blaming? You're blaming me because I didn't, I did something to sabotage your claim. But it's not just that. I work with the auditor's office for property taxes, I work with the recorder's office to record documents, that's why they're so important. Like, there's so many of it, the, the clerk's office for marriage certificates, divorce certificates, all of those things fall into my purview, the health department for death certificates. I have to go out and get all these things. I have to gather all this stuff, which is not in my job description, nor is checking on the homeless in this town. Other duties as assigned. That's whatever walks through the door. That's what that means for me. But as far as stipends and all that, I'm completely, that's over to the people that are smart on that, not me. I appreciate whatever you did, whatever you do. I said if it was two dollars, okay, fine, I did ask for an increase. I know it was a suggestion. Comparing me as a department head to like what Mr. Rickman does, or he does a different job, yes, he supervises another, I don't have that opportunity. But making more than a jail officer, who does more? Me in the jail? I don't know. It's apples, it's apples and peanuts. It's not the same. But they don't do what I do, and I don't do what they do. Me against another veteran service officer? Yes, all day. But that's, whatever you guys approve, I, I'm fine with it. If you came back and said, sorry, we can't do it, okay. Doesn't change.
The, let me explain to you my reasoning, is I wanted, I threw it out there as something to just see what the stuff.
No, I.
Wanted some conversation, but, because I want to, I want to be clear that, I mean, either do the right thing, or go in the wrong direction.
Right.
And listening to some other council members, I thought that was too high. Now, did I, do I think it could be more? Yes, I do think it could be more. But I also know that you're a salty dog, you're, you've been, you're senior MCO. You, there's a certain way you handle things, and I know that because I've been in the military. Straightforward, you say what's on, say what's on your mind, and, and people don't always know how to take that with you. You're good at what you do. I've told you that when I worked with you, worked with me. Oh, I thought we could do the paperwork on our own? I said there's absolutely no way before I ever met you. Well, as I sat down, you ran through the process, you knew all the ins and outs. And I think there's, there's some value to that because it helps a lot of veterans, it saves them a lot of time. Are there some things you might be doing that aren't in your job description? Absolutely. Does your job description need to be cleaned up? Absolutely. And I think that's discussion that needs to be taken care of.
In the process.
I would hate for you to leave to go to Wayne County, to lose that, because I think that there's a lot of value to bring it to this county. You just scratch a tip of the iceberg with what you can do, what, what your, what your potential is to this county. But I think you just, you work with us a little bit to give us a chance to, to do some things and see what, see what we can do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, as far as the Wayne County thing, I just learned that my friend retired. I knew he was coming up on it, but I didn't know he left. There was no, oh, hey, by the way, man, today's my last day, brother. Oh, okay. It was, oh, he's gone. Oh, okay, well, how are you? He is now three to four weeks behind on doing anything for anyone. So I said, if you need help, send them to me, I'll help you.
It goes deeper than that, Ron, in some things here.
Such as?
If you're working outside the job description that you have, and something happens in your car or whatever, an accident, and a veteran gets hurt, God forbid, you put us in legal jeopardy because they're gonna be suing somebody. And we're paying you, and it's outside that, we could be sued for what you've done.
Okay.
And that's what's got us concerned, we could be hit with a lawsuit because you were doing a job that you weren't supposed to be doing.
No one's ever brought that to my attention, sir, but.
Well, it's now out there.
So, okay, and I'll address that.
I'm sorry?
Would that be only in a county vehicle? Because I think that is a private vehicle.
Yeah, I don't.
In spite of his insurance.
That'd be a Jeff question.
Yes, that's a private vehicle.
And then anyway, his job description says, and other details, so anything can fall under other details.
So here's, here's a, here's a point, here's a point to this.
It says, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna break this. Other duties as needed or assigned.
Okay, that's pretty broad.
That's not part of his duties. The commissioners don't want him to do that.
I'm just saying, if it says.
I know, but I'm just saying, when you say that.
Well, did he just say it says that?
I'm sorry?
Is that what it says?
It says other duties as assigned. They have not come to me and told me.
And I'm saying it's not, it's not been assigned.
Okay, but I'm just saying that's pretty broad.
Who makes that determination?
Commissioners.
Or the commissioners?
Job description. Any within your job description.
Okay.
That's the reason you need to work on your job description.
Right, absolutely.
That's what Mike would say, you know.
That's what I'm working on right now.
Then that way, everything.
There's a lot that doesn't go into a job description, but.
Absolutely, I agree.
The CEO of a company, however that works. However, sir, to, to answer your question, what if I get injured going to a nursing home here in town? That's in my job description. And I get hit and killed in my vehicle on the way, performing in my official duties because I don't have a vehicle to drive that I've asked for, that I was promised when I got here.
When you say that, none of the commissioners, after you said it in the last meeting, I asked all three of them, and all three of them denied that you were ever promised a vehicle.
I was, it was, I was in here with Mr. Nabi, Mr. Munson, and Mr. Strong for my job I was, it was, I was in here with Mr. Nabi, Mr. Munson, and Mr. Strong from my job interview.
And Mr. Munson and Mr. Strong...
And I'll go back and talk to them.
Have both said that, that you weren't promised...
I'm not gonna get in an argument on camera with this. That's not...
I'm just saying, when you bring it up, that's not exactly true.
Can we move on with the...
And that's fine. But...
He does a good job.
With, with, I'm gonna get back, I'm gonna answer this question. If I get killed doing my duties that are in my job description, which is going to nursing homes and making home visits, that's in my job description. If I was to get injured or killed during that transaction in my private vehicle, is the county liable?
No.
Okay. Me transporting someone to the hospital here in Connersville because they don't have a ride to get there. If I see them on the side of the road and I pick them up because it's 90 degrees outside to do that, if I get in an accident, it's on my insurance, just as if I drove around town anywhere because I don't have a vehicle to use, period.
You have to talk to our lawyer. I'm not a lawyer, Ron. I'm just telling you where concerned about our liability.
Right, but you're saying you guys could be sued, but that's also not necessarily the case until I talk to him about it.
If you're not on the clock.
Right.
Whatever you do, we're not liable for it.
Right.
Period.
Right.
If you're not on the clock, but if you are on the clock, then we may stand some liability. I don't know.
Well, and that's why I need to talk to him.
Sure.
Like, a lot of this is, a lot of what's happening in here, I, I'm trying to go talk to the commissioners. I'm trying to talk to Jane so I can get better understanding as, okay, what's, because I don't think of, I can't think of every single, I am kinda like what Scott brought up last week, right? He brought up the, he brought up the same point. I hadn't thought about that, okay? It's just something of the wheel that I was looking at. That's a spoke that was missing.
Think you're in the Navy, Ron. You had a job description, didn't you?
I do have a job description, and if you help me do that job description, there would be a lot...
Bob, they're working on the job description. We've got that.
Sir, that job description hasn't been updated since 2011. There's been two other, there's been two other VSOs here.
Sean, can we move on?
So, am I done?
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, are we gonna try to, are we gonna give him any gas money, car or anything like that?
Do what?
Are we gonna give him any gas money?
Well, we decide all that, haven't we?
We've already, that's already been decided, yeah?
Decided.
Yeah. I think that discussion is done, and we're gonna move on. So what is the next, where do we stand on the budget right now? Where are we at?
Half a million over.
I would even need EDG. I think we had the hundred thousand and...
Everything, already.
Yeah.
That's true.
Pardon me? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I think, I, I, I thought everything's been gone through.
Right, right, it has, it has. So where are we at right now? How much over?
The budgets, as you have them, I think would pass. So when you say how much over, I mean, it, it might have been ninety...
I knew we were trying to get ninety-six, eighty-nine, ninety-one.
Like, last year we did count, it generally was nine point one. This year we're doing nine point six. That will cut into our reserves, for sure. But, I mean, it is a fundable budget.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well, we need, uh, what did you say, Kay?
I just wanted to know if we're gonna read that hundred thousand on EDG.
What page is EDG? Okay.
What page? Page thirty-five says pay for EDG, county share.
Is it?
Okay.
It's page thirty-seven.
What, Jane?
It's part of courthouse operating, it's page thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
So what are you wanting to do?
I just ask that anybody, anybody else, if that's what we're gonna stay at, a hundred thousand or cut it any, is my question.
I think I made a motion earlier in the year that we would give her the health insurance for the life of the patients who, who would give, how much do we save them out of?
Eighty-six thousand.
Okay. Did we okay thirty thousand on that?
Where are you at? What are you talking about now?
EDG service, right here. Service contracts, page thirty-seven.
Well, it's, it's, right now, it's at a hundred thousand. I thought I recommended thirty. Somebody had mentioned thirty.
Yeah, I recommend, I recommended thirty. Yeah.
Well, I would, I would really be disappointed if we took it down that far.
Yeah.
I, I don't know of any other entity in government that has subsisted on the same amount of money for over thirty years other than economic development.
Well, we talked about last time about the city. They're not gonna help.
No, they're not, not right now. But that's something that, that hopefully we can work on this year.
I think you're getting some setup, um, with a go-go talk to the city. If you wanna have, get some of this stuff straightened out.
Probably needs to be fifty thousand up. I mean, the city wants to pick up, I don't know. We did eighty last year, so the commissioners have requested a hundred.
I thought that too, Scott. I don't see that.
There might be some, there might be something else in that service contract line. That's not solely...
What's that one page, Bob?
Or maybe not, I don't know.
Um, last, last year, I think eighty came out of the economic development contract too. And this year, the commissioners wanted it in the courthouse.
Yeah.
Right? And so, they did eighty last year, and they've asked for a hundred this year.
Well, they got eighty and they spent forty so far this year.
Yeah. Uh, do you, you guys pay that, what, quarterly? Is that quarterly payment?
Twenty thousand dollars.
More payment, Bob. I'd say you take that dating what was before.
Eighty. What do you think, Scott? Uh, I wouldn't go any less than eighty.
Because this budget's part of the capital plan, and if you reduce that, you're giving that to the city. It's basically a decision made.
And that's, and that's true. So, I mean...
So what you want the city to pay for, you're actually giving to the city. So if you reduce it by fifty thousand, that goes to, fifty thousand goes to the city. You reduce it by ten thousand, goes to the city. So whatever you reduce this capital plan for, goes back to the city.
Yeah.
We don't keep any of it.
I, I, we give enough money to the city.
You're not, you're not helping us. You're hurting us.
We give enough money to the city. That's for sure.
But what happens at eighty?
Well, we give twenty back.
We give twenty thousand dollars.
I mean, do you wanna give anything back up if you're saying they're not paying for, you say they're not chipping it up for, uh, eight, nine oh one? The, um, EDG, then we're gonna get money back?
Yeah.
That's the logic, Dave.
Well, I can assure you, the community is very upset with the performance of EDG.
Oh, I don't question that, Tim, but yet you need to have one.
I'm sure we do. Yes, yes, we do. But we wanna continue to spend money in it at this rate?
Well, if you don't, you probably won't have one.
And, and again, the payroll of Nova in 2026 is gonna be millions more than we've ever spent on economic development in over thirty years. So...
Well, and we're banking on that. That hasn't happened yet, but we're banking on that.
Well, it's on the, it's on the way, and I'm, I'm sure even the mayor would agree to that, that it's well on its way.
I'm just, you know, I talk this stuff constantly with people on the street, and they are extremely upset.
Well...
With EDG.
Well, you can get people upset over what, the climate.
Do we satisfy those people, or do we take it on ourselves and, and do it? That's...
Well, you know, a lot of, a lot of what EDG does doesn't make headlines.
Well, I understand. Everything's a secret, Scott, and I understand.
Well, no, I don't, I don't mean it as far as everything's a secret, but I'll give you an example. Um, when I had that job, I got a call from the, this, it may have been thirty years down the road now, so I don't think it's a big deal, but, um, I got a call from President Roots, and they were, um, being blocked from bidding on a project in Kuwait. And there was a Saudi Arabian company using a Swedish firm to block them. And they asked if, if we could help. And so, we got ahold of Congressman Hamilton, and Hamilton wrote a letter to the Saudi Arabian consulate, and then all of a sudden, Roots got access to that project. Now, that's not, you know, something that is gonna make headlines, that everybody's gonna know about, right?
Yeah, well, there's...
But that's, that's the kind of thing that EDG does, and eighty percent of economic development is trying to help keep what you've already got. And, um, like I said, some, most of that doesn't make headlines. So, I, I mean, I understand why some of the people you talk to, I mean, if they're not privy to that information, would be a little upset. But I think, I think, um, you know, this is an area we have to have.
I believe we need a present, yes.
Right. And so, and I've told you that, um, during my stint on that board, that I've made it clear to, um, that board that there were things that needed to be improved. They have made some improvements, and I'm, I'm satisfied that we're headed in the right direction.
So are we leaving it at the hundred thousand, so the money doesn't go back to the city?
Take a vote.
Take a vote. Real call, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. What's the, is there a motion?
We didn't make a motion. We were just, are we leaving it the same?
We want you to leave it at a hundred thousand dollars.
To leave it at a hundred thousand.
Second.
If you don't have, if you're leaving a hundred thousand, you don't have to do anything.
Okay.
You don't have to vote.
Just leave it at a hundred thousand, she said. Yeah. So...
Okay.
That we are making changes. I mean, there's things that's happening, upcoming, and, and it's, it is true. Everything is out in public knowledge.
No, they, they're very secretive about what they do, but they do...
It's not secret. It just, it has to do with...
Right.
Certain businesses get solved ahead of time. That was out of what, they came down here.
Yeah.
They don't want the word getting out ahead of time because it puts a pan, you in a panic.
There's confidentiality. I understand that confidentiality. I understand.
I had a wife who would kill me if she had to tell me something.
So, is there further comment on the budget that we need to, uh, discuss? Somewhere that, um, and we're comfortable where we are, um, as far as what we've done?
Chair, did we, uh, bring up wages for the council and the, uh, commissioners?
No, we haven't discussed that. We just kinda passed it over in that. Woody.
I think it's all been brought up. It's not gonna affect me one way or the other, but I think that the council commissioners haven't had a raise in about ten years, so...
We could probably go one more year without one.
I sent them a raise of twenty seventeen.
I've only known one raise since I've been on here.
Yeah, that's, yes, look at that.
Twenty seventeen, so it's been eight years. What are you thinking?
Thousand dollars.
What's?
Thousand.
A thousand more?
Is that, is that...
Or up to a thousand?
Up to a thousand on rates.
What, would, given our, our budgetary setup, would that be possible for the commissioners? I don't know that it's possible for the council, given the budget that was presented. Would it?
Yeah, because since you're in county general, it's county general as a whole. So even if you didn't request increases, we cut enough other places.
You can, you can't take that for it?
There's more.
Personally, I think we make it out. Personally, I think we make it out.
Oh, I said, do the county, do employees get to where they need to be? I won't, I won't take one.
I'm comfortable with...
Yeah, we hire Democrats when we get on here.
Well...
Well, I mean, I don't know. I just, I, I think there's enough here for that.
Is there further discussion, Jim? Do you want to?
No, the commissioners put in for a thousand, didn't they raise?
They put in for some, um...
As far as actual work, commissioners are more, they have more work to do than we do, really, when it comes right down to the bottom line.
That's true.
One more time.
Supposed to be here while prison.
Oh, is it?
All of them would be here with...
One.
And Dale would be here.
An eleven hundred dollar increase to what they asked.
And we did not, right?
Right, we did not.
Well, if they're not here, we can't discuss it.
They want about thirty-five hundred dollars.
That's not what he's saying.
Oh, it's not what he's saying.
They want thirty-five hundred dollars more.
Yeah, they want eleven hundred.
Yeah, I was gonna say, between the three of them, it would be an eleven hundred dollar increase.
Yeah.
One thousand one hundred.
Each one, though, yeah.
Job requires a lot more than work than our shows.
We never did address it.
Then we're us.
Why did we not address us?
The raises for the commissioners, we never put a figure, we left...
Well, we, we leave them at forty-four seven?
I'm just saying, between the two jobs, the job is more tense than ours.
For now, you had left them at forty-four seven.
If you give them two, you give them four on the rest of history, you get the whole thing, well, they probably deserve a little more than we do, I think.
I'd say we stay where we're at, but then give the commissioners a little something.
One of the commissioners in the council had to pay cut, we, you know, years ago, they dealt them a half or something like that, or more. In comparison to other commissioners in the surrounding counties, they didn't get paid quite a bit less.
Are we gonna do something, or we're not?
Discussion.
I think Scott's looking up other counties.
Yeah, commissioners do get paid quite a bit less than other communities similar to us or, um, other counties around us. I mean, the average for counties around us is about twenty-three, and, um, the, um, counties with populations between twenty and twenty-five thousand make twenty-one.
What about council?
We're not the last year.
Um, council, um, eighty-three hundred for counties around us, on average. Seventy-eight hundred for communities of our, similar size. So we're not the lowest in either, um, we're not the lowest in terms of communities of our size, but we are on the low end.
I'd say the commissioners were, what they asked for, give what they asked for.
A motion?
Yeah.
Give the council five hundred dollars, then.
Got a motion on the floor to give the commissioners...
You lose me there.
Lost.
Give them the council a raise.
Why?
Cause...
You don't affect me one way or the other.
Well, I know, but there's other benefits that are available.
Would you, are we gonna do the...
I gave a motion to give the commissioners what they requested that they're... Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. No.
No. Okay. So moved. Okay, now, finish your conversation on that.
I'll make motion for the council to give five hundred dollars.
A five hundred dollar raise?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it just for the purpose of voting.
Okay. So, do you want to just do ayes, or do you want a real call?
Real call.
Real call.
Quinta?
No.
Riker, Peyton?
No.
Patterson?
No.
No.
Wolf?
Yes.
Oddington?
No.
Stewart?
Yes.
Creightonville?
Yes.
Okay, that would be three yeses, four nos, the motion failed.
I'll make a statement, I should.
Back to the courthouse, Jim.
You what?
Back to the courthouse.
Yeah.
You know what? I have never voted for.
I know, I know that, Scott.
Pay increase for, even when I was on city council twenty years ago.
I know that, how good.
Thanks for the effort, Jim.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for the thought.
Nice thought.
Next year, I'll vote yes.
I may. I may not be here for that.
Okay, moving on. Um, so, we have covered, uh, the commissioners and the county council now. Um, is there anything else for further discussion?
I just have a question, just for, if it was done or not, I was dreaming this. Did I talk about something about health insurance background council we were gonna, so we were going to address during the budgetary? Or am I high on crack?
It has been discussed.
This year?
At meetings earlier in the year.
Scott talked about, Scott talked about, and then he went down the path with the, giving everybody a pay cut, and that's where he lost me and lost a lot of us.
It was last year.
Okay, say that again, Mike, I'm sorry.
Scott went down a path of addressing the healthcare with elected, elected council. And then he went, well, I would say one step too far, where he said he cut, what recommended cutting the pay for the commissioners of the council by half.
That was last year.
That was right, it was last year. But it was supposed to be addressed this year, and then I brought, I had brought something I thought later, and it would be another meeting, or that same meeting, that would pass, the motion had passed, but I could be wrong, could be just dreaming this whole thing up.
I think.
I think you're dreaming.
I mean, it was brought up last year, but.
I'm just.
I, I, I assume, I was not here for the original discussion for, regarding the commissioners. And so, I felt like, you know, that opportunity to address that had already, it had likely been covered already, so I didn't bring it up again.
Well, 'cause that's a change they have to make.
Well, no, well, again, our, our way to effect policy is to reduce, um, reduce or eliminate funding for certain things. And so, that funding is in the group health insurance line item of the commissioners' budget. And again, I was, I was not here for the discussion, so I assumed it had already been.
I just wanted to make sure it was covered. If I, if I brought it up and there was a motion, I just wanted to make sure we covered it, we at least talked about it.
I don't, I don't know.
If it wasn't discussed, then.
A motion, not when I've been here, anyway.
I can't say.
I think you were gone.
I can't say, because I don't remember.
I mean, that's just, maybe I'm wrong.
I just wanted to make sure it was covered, Sharon. I just wanted to make sure it was covered, I did mention it. It's too late to this point anyways.
For the insurance?
Yeah, it's too late. Dale agreed. I don't know what you guys are doing over there, but, um.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to talk to him about something here. It, it, it's okay, it's not related to what you were talking about.
Move right on, Sharon.
Okay, so I guess, um, I guess what Jane and I was talking about, and, um, well, it's neither here nor there. Um, but I do, I just know, Kay has brought this up several times, and, and, and I'm like, Jim, sometimes I do think that, and this is my opinion, my opinion only, I'm not running for office this year, but I do feel like that, um, I, I don't know what the harm would be to have a raise. That's my opinion, and I'm just putting it out there. I've never asked for anything, um, anything, so.
For any political thing, it's a personal thing, I think, just, I mean, if everybody, if it's six to one, doesn't matter to me. It's just my personal thought, my personal.
And that's my personal, I'm, I'm like you. I, I'm, I'm here whether there's a raise or there ain't. I'm just saying, you know, 'cause it, it, but, I mean.
Our time is worth something.
Across the board, everyone's getting raised, and I, I agree, Tim, our time is worth something. And, but, you know, it's neither here nor there, we voted it, and, but that's my opinion, and I have a right to that.
Well, people guide for that.
Yep. That's just my opinion. So, we can give the commissioners thirty-five hundred.
That's five hundred dollars a piece, I think.
Yep, yep. But there again, you know, our time is valuable also.
And they don't sit through this.
Well, that's what we were elected to do.
That's right.
That's why I said I'll be here regardless.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So.
But commissioners are bombarded with something every day.
Were you at the meeting today with them?
We were.
Yeah, they wanna do that rock out there, move it over there.
They got a, they got, they got their plate full. And I disagree how they run it, but they got their plate full.
Do what?
I don't know.
I know what Bob said, he said a clock or something, or? I didn't hear what you, I didn't hear what you were saying.
He said something about a rock. The rock out here goes over there, and then people wanted to move it back over there, and said, well, where are you gonna put it? Just stuff like that, they have to put up with.
Well, Bob, it's kind of important to some people.
It is important to some people, but I really don't care.
Okay, moving on. So, are we good with the budget?
Yeah.
How much do the employees get?
Three thousand.
Three thousand, good.
Yep.
Two dollars an hour for increases for part timers.
That nice thing is, Jim's donating the proceeds from his sale of his business to the county. Thank you, Jim.
Dream on, Mike, you're a dreamer.
Billionaire.
You could ask for a popsicle, my before this, Jim.
So what do we, do we need to vote on the budget now, or is it pretty well?
No, we gotta come back.
Okay, what, what do we do tonight, if you're sure that you're all done, is just adjourn the hearings, and then your budget adoption meeting is already set for September seventeenth at six P M.
Seventeenth, Jane?
And once we, once we close tonight, Sharon, that's it. Nothing else can change.
Don't forget that, Kay.
Do what?
Once you close tonight, nothing can change.
Don't forget that, Kay.
Right. You don't forget, tell Bob not to forget it.
September seventeenth at what time?
Six P M.
Then we're gonna give one.
Jane, I want to thank you for putting up with this, you've done a good job. You too, Sharon.
Yeah, I just wanna know, I just wanna say, a lot of times when I'm saying things, I'm not even giving an opinion, because that's, I don't feel like that's my role, but I do try to, like, when I hear you guys saying things, I just try to put out there what I think the facts are based on whatever, the numbers or.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, so. I mean, I, I might not always come off quite as nice as I wish I, shut up. I'm just saying, I'm just trying to be informative. I feel like that's my role, is to be informative, so.
Just keep track.
Do a good job.
There you go.
You do do, you do do a good job.
Do we need a motion to adjourn the hearings?
If that is what we're doing, yes.
Very good.
Did you make the motions, go?
Scott, you're in.
I heard one, then Wolf do it. I just said, do we need most?
Okay.
Call the coin.
Mike, you made the motion?
I guess so.
And Wolf seconded the motion?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
On back on the seventeenth, six?